I want to call this special meeting to order. Special agenda item number one. And I want to call special agenda item two, discussion on action regarding CARES Act funding. Mr. Perez, you have the floor. And if we could have a copy for the media and it saved time for our public council, please.
And we apologize, they're on their way with the copies of the report to give to the council. And also, so we can put it on the on the screen there. So we do have, we will have a, it's a presentation of, this is a draft budget that would be asked each of the departments to prepare is a budget for each of the for COVID expenditures and also future COVID expenditures. And so we will be passing that out shortly. And so what we, what we, you'll have is a summary of what the departments looked at as the need. One of the things that we experienced during the pandemic and currently is the need of equipment, a need of technology, the need of supplies, and also different, to be able to not only work remotely, but also to be prepared for this pandemic in the future and currently. And so we, one of the things that we looked at is is what do we need to prepare for the future and for from here to now till the end of December? And then also moving forward for future preparedness. And so we, we looked at different, every single department submitted a proposed draft of what they would consider for each, each other department use. And so going down the, the summary page. So this, this funding in particular is again, COVID related. And it's necessary expenditures incurred during, due to the public health emergency. Costs not accounted for in the budget, most recently approved as of March 27th. And then costs incurred during the period that began March 1st to December the 30th. But also, you know, the guidance has the expenditure. So basically, those are the categories that these are, these funds can be utilized. According to, you know, as we all have heard, there's a current allocation right now that was announced for 110 per capita. And so we're looking at an estimated $9.3 million. That's what the allocation is. And so one of the, one of the, the, the most utilized use of these funds is the, the equipment. Moving forward, you know, the equipment that we realize as departments that was, was needed. Adjustments that we made for the departments included remote teleworking, remote working from other sites or working from home, depending on the situation. And so one of the things that, you know, moving forward, we felt that technology upgrades were necessary to be able to accommodate this moving forward and also in the future. Like I mentioned to our staff, you know, we're, we're not over this current pandemic. And also, you know, wanted to, to, to be prepared in case that we shut down again. And we have the necessary equipment for it. Not only that, but our supplies and so forth. So going down the list, machinery and equipment. If you see, we were estimating approximately $5.1 million of equipment that each of the departments feel necessary for them to continue, you know, with this. A lot of it, a lot of the equipment deals with, again, technology. But also, you know, most importantly, the disinfecting equipment that, that we did not have. And equipment that was very difficult to obtain because of the demand. And so moving forward, you know, we would like to have at least, you know, several disinfecting machinery for each of the buildings. We, we realize that the, the importance of the disinfecting of, of the buildings and also to not only keep the citizens safe, but also our employees. So the majority of that is, is equipment like that where it's either through teleworking and/or sanitizing equipment. Also, one of the things that we looked at is, is securing our buildings as well. Here in City Hall, we have our utility building. We, we have on there as, as a modification that we had to do is we, because of this, we had congestion in our drive-throughs. And so we're asking also for an addition, an expansion of additional two lanes to accommodate for our vital statistics department, which will include our birth certificates, death certificates. And also any, so we'll have a designated lane right now. And yesterday, we had all four lanes full all the way to Highland because, because of the use of the drive-through. And so we are still utilizing the drive-through for a lot of services aside from just paying the bill or also new accounts for our utility. And so that's also something that we're proposing. The, that would, that would require, you know, the, the building of the two, the two lanes. And then also the infrastructure for servicing those two lanes. So that's, that's another example that, that we, we felt was needed. On software, we're, we're looking at, of course, how do we, how are we able to utilize online services? Also to process, you know, not only work orders and purchase orders and so forth, but upgrading our, our current software to be able to, to work remotely from a different location. Currently, right now, we physically had to be here at City Hall to be able to go through our, our current system. And so there is upgrade opportunities for that, to be able to access our system remotely. To be able to, in case this building is, is to be shut down completely, we're able to operate remotely. Currently, we do physically have to be here in order for us to continue processing our paperwork. And so we're looking more of an efficient online system to be able to, you know, process requisitions, purchase orders remotely and not necessarily online and not necessarily on physically here at, at the office. So we are proposing that as well. We, part of a major component of this also is safety supplies. We realize that we do have a a need that we don't know the extent of this. And so therefore, safety supplies for our employees is, is very important. And so that's something that we factored in here as well. We want to make sure that we have plenty of, of, you know, PPEs, the personal protective equipment for our first responders as well as our employees that currently, right now, we are having each of our employees wear facial coverings. And so we want to make sure that we have plenty of those moving forward. Again, not knowing the extent of this. As far as, we do have renovations of an existing building. And this is just a proposal as well, where we can utilize one of our buildings, if, if that's the direction. In this case, we, we talked about, yesterday, we talked about the old Head Start building, whether that could be a, either a, a distribution center to expand over to the food pantry or also a testing center that, that could be utilized. But of course, we, we are looking at the timeframe as well, considering the, the time for the expenditures. And so we're, we're wanting to get clarification on the, the extent, the time extension. Whether it's going to be, whether it's going to be open until December or it's going to be extended further. That's something that, that we'll consider taking on that, that project. I, I believe it would be, you know, we, we saw the, the need of the food pantry. We saw the need this morning as there were, there was a food distribution that had hundreds and hundreds of cars lined up for the food distribution. And so with the expansion of the service of the, of the food pantry, where we feel that that building would be essential for that, for that, for that purpose also to design it where if it's, if it could be designed as a a potential testing facility or a food distribution for, for the extension of the food pantry. So we have that also. The, the majority of, of the rest is on improvements, we are factoring here also a a building or a for, for, for future storage and/or of, of equipment and/or also safety supplies. We are looking at, at that expansion as well, proposing that as part of, of, of future expansion. For the most part, the majority of the departments included, again, as, as I mentioned, the, the use of PPEs, also the equipment and software that is necessary for. One of the things that I asked the departments as well is, is what modifications do we have to do to our current departments? To be able to plan for the future? And, and as you all know, some of the departments included the plexiglass coverings on some of the counters. We had to make some of those modifications. And so we included those modifications on here as well to be able to plan for the future and also for our current pandemic that we're still on. Any questions so far?
Randy, I just have, well, just a question. So right now, they are proposing to give us 9.5, right?
9.3.
9.3, okay. So where are we going to cut by from this 14? Do you already have something that they already said they were going to give us? And then the second step would be?
So, so yes, and, and if you look at the area on the summary portion of it, where it has the individual citizens' utility assistance, Boys and Girls Club entrance, downtown rental. So those, those are the areas that we would look at for the areas that, that we would consider reducing. For example, I, I do have Daniel here who would be presenting the ADC component that, you know, we, we might have a different estimates here versus what, what he's proposing for economic stimulus. And so that's, that's an area that we'll look at as well. The, the intent for this, the 14 million is because of the potential of the full allocation, right? And so the, that's, that's one of the reasons why we have it on here. But that's the area that we would look at. That to either consolidate the amounts and then also look at a potential reduction there on some of those categories. So those, those, that's what we're, we're planning to do on that. Depending on the availability of funds. Again, this is a, a, you know, working document. It's still, we're, we're looking at, at changes daily. We, we are receiving notifications on, you know, additional funding that might be available in the future. And so that might change these numbers as well to be able to offer the different programs through different funding. So that's, that's, that's something also that we'll consider moving forward.
I noticed here, Randy, that you had had custodians and then you have like different, like every department has supplies, sanitizers and all stuff. I would like to see maybe one general, one person in charge of all that to hand out, so we can have checks and balances and accountability? And then some type of facility or storage to store all of that?
Yes, so, and that's exactly what we, we planned. It's, right now, it's being handled through our risk management department. He receives any and all personal protective equipment or sanitation supplies that is accounted for and also stored at the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center. And so he has an account, accountability of that. We, we plan to continue doing that. The only difference would be on, on the police side and the fire side. If they need something additional for their own purpose, they would, they would be administering those supplies. But for the most part, this is a, a, a detail that would be consolidated into one, one department as far as supplies.
Mr. Perez, Gus has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question, Randy. On salaries of employees, you have $551,000?
That's, that's correct. And those, those are strictly COVID-related. Expended, the one?
Already expended?
Some of them have.
It says through May.
Yes.
So are you, are you planning on, are you allotting any of salaries between now and December?
That's, that's correct, ma'am, I am. If you look at, we are looking at a, on here, the so we are looking at the eligibility for public safety, also health and planning. That's something that, that we're allocating as well for, for future, from now, at least now till December. That's something that, that we are going to include on here. That is an eligible expense and that's something that, that we feel that is going to be ongoing.
You don't show it on the, on the list?
It's the COVID-19 positions, it's
On the last page?
It's three from the bottom up.
On the last page, the position specialist?
No.
It's a, that's a cluster of specialists. COVID-19 specialists.
Is that just like a new positions or no?
There should be the new positions.
What I'm talking about, like the fires, fire and, and police between now and, and December?
Definitely. So yes, we, we had, it's, it's not on this list, we, we modified it here shortly. But yes, definitely, we are budgeting for that for the remainder of the year at least. Until we find out if there's an extension at that point, whether beyond December. But we are, we're, we are looking at, at factoring in that, that component now. One of the things that, that we want to make sure that we fall within the parameters of the the guidance is, is exactly what is covered on the public safety side. We do have an estimate of, of the potential expenditures for, from now to December. However, we want to get clarification on, on not only extended beyond December, but also what specifically what is covered under, not necessarily 100% of the department, but the component that is covered. So that's something that, that we are planning to, to allocate here. We did have it on the previous estimate. But it was, it was something that was, we're, we're looking at clarification, but yes.
Keep in mind, this is for the purpose of just budgeting, because we were given 30 days from October to come up with a proposed budget, not necessarily, not necessarily, I mean, they did tell us to, to include all expenditures already done. And, and to project expenditures from now till December 31st.
That's correct.
Because the primary, the primary guideline with this money is they must be spent by December 31st, 2020, unless our, our in conversation with Senator John Corney, he said that in September, he was going to go, when they go back, that he was going to submit a, a resolution to extend 90 more days beyond December. You know, those that have already budgeted and, and have been allocated, that they will extend 90 more days. Because like right now, since we declared the city on March 13th, we've done March, April and May, and we still don't have the money in the account. Even though the money has already been allocated to the county, you know, moved from the, from the, from the feds to the state to the county, even though they have it in, in there, the release is not there until, and so we've, I've asked Senator to, to do that or not only for me, but for all the cities of the 11 counties that, that they were funded in Texas.
Ma'am, I have a couple more questions.
Hold on, let me, let me make sure that Mr. Perez's question is, is fully answered.
Yes, I just want to be sure that, that, you know, that we do a lot for, for future salaries for, for fire and police.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Okay, Ms. Torres.
Under police and I think some of fire, some other, I just briefly glanced through this item. And thank you to the Finance Department for putting this together. What do you all mean by rental equipment? Because I see on one line item, it's like $56,000. What, what exactly are you all planning to rent? Like radio and stuff like that or what? Instead of purchasing them, we're going to spread them?
Chief, are you on?
It's right behind you.
Chief is here with us.
It's just right behind you. Take that.
And so we have, we have the directors on, online. And so in case they're not here, we are, that's why.
Chief, just out of curiosity, on the line item, it says RGV Communication Group, $56,000 for rental and machinery. I was just wondering, obviously, it's something that you all need for all of this. But what is the difference between renting something and maybe purchasing one or two of them?
What that is, ma'am, is the actual yearly, that is the actual yearly amount that we pay the communication group to be on the regional system for both police and fire.
And since that, is it the regular, the regular fees?
Yes, sorry, it's a regular.
Might be a clarification on that because this money is supposed to be for COVID-19 additional expenditures that we have to do, you know? And or under four categories, prevention, preparedness, response and recovery. Under four, those four categories that we have to do different, different. You know, like if you needed more licenses, you know, to, to, to make new, you know, the adjustments that we had to do with, with the dispatchers, we had to adjust the dispatcher, those kind of things.
Right.
You know, just, just a point, I, chief.
And we'll check those.
Yes.
Thank you.
But that's what it is.
Thank you. And next, Randy, remember yesterday, we talked about you all for more clarification and reference too. I know we have, we already said it here, and Mayor said that, that we have until December 31st to spend these money. But I would like more clarification on if we can begin the building process of having several projects in building, buildings of sorts, either remodeling or building or finding or paying or buying something in the city that can be used for either a clinic, a social service center on addition to the food pantry or, I mean, whatever it needs for police or fire. And then my last comment is, the Plata was very vocal, and I know he's not here today, but I want to mention that we all spoke about yesterday helping our community members through the CDPG funding for people for the food and all that. But today, I also wanted to concentrate more on helping our local businesses through the MADC. And I'm just not sure if what is allotted here would be enough for that.
Well, let's, why don't we allow Danny Silva to come or, or a member of the chamber to come and do their presentation to see. Go ahead, Mr. Silva, you're recognized by the chair.
And if I just may answer the one on the building, so I did ask for clarification. We haven't received that response as far as if we start a project, a remodeling project, for example, you know, if we issue, issue out the PO and encumber the funds, is that sufficient if it goes beyond December? And so we, we're going through the project, we encumber the, the funds for that project. However, it's not spent at 100%, so I'm, I'm waiting for that clarification.
And they're very slow in responding because the, when the county goes to the state, the state goes to the treasury. And then the treasury takes their sweet time about responding whether it's an eligible item or not. So meanwhile, it just, you know, we, we just have to wait or use it for something else.
And, and, and we'll get that clarification because we do have that particular project and another facility that we would like to build for, for the future, you know, pandemic. But also with, with the, hopefully, we can get it extended so that we were able to go beyond the December date.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Mr. Silva, you're recognized.
Hello, ma'am. So, you know, taking into consideration the prevention and the recovery and the small business need that we have we came together with a, a total budget of $4 million. I know stipulated, we have numbers kind of broken down, but I'll go, and it covers a couple of the sections. So I'll go into that in, in detail. You know, we're looking at it for the businesses, grants for the businesses and how we can help them recover and how we can help them offset costs that they've had to incur. Part of it is, as we noticed, as we did our survey, as we reached out to the businesses, marketing and getting people to realize that they're open and, and expenses that they had to make because they had to go other means. You know, we looked at shared resources like billboards, marketing areas, funds for, and digital ad campaigns. We looked at gap programs for restaurants, costs that they've lost due to not being able to operate the same way. Looking at recovering some of the salaries that they've spent on, on their, on their employees by keeping them employed. Costs of technologies that they've had to expense so that they can go curbside, they can start marketing themselves electronically. We looked at also small business grants, you know, looking at, a lot of businesses started facing the costs of, of equipment and materials increasing because of scarcity. So we're looking at, you know, they can apply, or we'll come up with an application, they can process, we can try to offset some of those increased costs, costs that they can come across. Once again, a percentage of the salaries that they had to pay for their employees to keep them functioning. A percentage of the lost revenues, you know, giving that back to them. We're looking at a pillar program because we have some businesses here in the community that have been here for a long time. You know, we want to make sure that we have funds allocated for them so that we can make sure that, that they have preventive measures for, if it just happens again, that they're not affected as, as critically. So that category was $2 million. We'd also have grants for the downtown rent area, you know, for individuals that are having issues with their rent or landlords that have added forego rent to some of their tenants. Be able to recruit some of those funds. Small business loans, businesses needed funds to, to help, you know, capitalize or, or carry themselves. Another aspect to that is education, you know, as we looked at what we went through, a lot of businesses weren't ready. We put a, a budget line out of $1.5 million and in there, we have training programs. You know, teach them how to go online, Facebook just announced last week that they're going to have shops online. So they're trying to help these businesses transition because they've lost revenue because they couldn't sell electronically. We've also had some businesses that weren't able to expand, had some Uh, we've also had some businesses that weren't able to expand, had some, uh, some prospects that had, weren't able to do anything because of, for example, we'll take the hotel industry, we've had a decrease in the hotel occupancy rate. So, uh, we threw in there some funds to try to alleviate some of the costs for them to expand. Uh, some, the, uh, assistance for them to, to get through the process. And then also we looked at, um, healthcare needs by these, by these companies, you know, what they've had to do for P P E equipment to help their employees stay, stay employed and stay functioning. And the last aspect to it was five hundred thousand was for building needs at the seed. You know, one of the things that we saw was that businesses weren't able to operate or they weren't able to keep their, uh, to keep people in their buildings, but we can train them so they can do delivery service. If they don't have that capability, we can assist them at the seed. One of the things that we're looking at is before this was converting one of the spaces into a, a commercial kitchen and providing them with opportunities so that they can do to-go orders and they can have pickups done. Um, we have the food truck park that, uh, was affected, but providing an area for them to have, um, social distancing opportunities, but they can still come in and they can eat. So that's what the, the four million dollars consists of.
Okay, then, then have you submitted it to Mr. Pet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, uh, uh, any questions by any of the council to the M A D C? I, I, I feel that it's a, it's a great project, you know, we're gonna try to work on getting this, but, you know, there's, uh, there's also the option that, that, that possibility that if other cities don't use their COVID nineteen money, you know, that, uh, uh, there may be a, a recommendation tomorrow for the, to the judge to recommend a, a, kind of like a, a panel of, uh, mayors, you know, to assist the county in, in the, in the fact that they have additional funding that's not being used for December, that it would be dispersed to projects, like shovel-ready projects.
Right.
And this would be, this would be an excellent one for us to, you know, to, to, whatever level we can fund right now, we'll fund it. And, but it's the portion that we cannot fund, we'll work on getting that, getting those, those kind of funds. Because keep in mind, this is just a level one funding, there may, there may be more care funding, there might be a heroes, heroes act funding or, or a special business funding, you know? There were, there, there are definitely other, other state, uh, other federal agencies that are coming up with, uh, like, like, uh, the chunk that we got on, on HUD, you know, an extra chunk of, of seven hundred thousand. You know, like, like, we're gonna, we're gonna make every effort to look at all angles.
Appreciate that. Okay, ma'am, thank you.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Thank you.
Uh, the chamber?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So I have a copy of what I submitted to Ms., uh, Ms. Fabio and then Randy and David, so. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So I just wanna say that this would be an extension to the efforts that will be driven by the BURG committee and also the, our Economic Development Corporation. So, so this is a plan that we put together, um, as, uh, to prepare and recover, uh, our business, our chamber businesses and those prospects as well. So these efforts would complement those that are already happening through the E D C. So in the back, you'll see the proposed budget, um, and the request of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and the breakdown, uh, for each of those, uh, components. So what we were hoping to do was primarily, um, continue to do what we do, which is the Mission Chamber of Commerce to exist and promote, uh, businesses in advance and improve quality of life for the City of Mission. And in order for the chamber to carry out, uh, this charge for the remainder of the year of twenty twenty, uh, we propose to serve as a contractor, uh, to the City of Mission, which, uh, will be able to be, um, um, funded by the portion of the CARES Act, uh, Community Relief Program. And, uh, the following are the proposed ideas. So we propose to provide, uh, business recovery and resilience services to the members through funding of, uh, three temporary business recovery coordinators who will assist the G M C C president, vice president, director of marketing and tourism with day-to-day, uh, contracts with business orgs and management of professional development seminars and assistance in promotion to the businesses in various sectors of Mission's business community, including like re-grand opening of many of our businesses and similar events. Uh, membership, uh, and the G M C C will be more crucial than ever to the area businesses to ensure that they're resilient going into the future. Um, so G M C C also proposes to provide complimentary premium G M C C memberships to four hundred, uh, local businesses and match current members on a case-by-case to facilitate their membership renewals amid the current economic downturn. Uh, their success, we depend on their success and vice versa. Uh, funds are also budgeted to cover the cost of business development and coaching services to provide, uh, via contractors to G M C C members and the cost of enhanced promotion of area businesses and business sectors. Um, this budget also provides some administrative costs, which, um, will be a portion of the budget, includes provisions of safety supplies for visitors to the G M C C offices, as well as, and if a visitor, uh, doesn't have a mask and they're required to, you know, to go to one of our local eateries, um, they can come get one at the chamber as well. So we wanna encourage that, help our, our business, um, customers as well. Enhanced cleaning and sanitation stations, uh, staff development and safety trainings. I know that, uh, I recently met a gentleman who's C D C, um, um, certified, so that's something we can offer as well. And of course, uh, technology investment. So with this, we hope to do, um, going really deep-dug as one of our, uh, business development activities for our, uh, chamber members and the prospects is coaching on budgeting and forecasting. See where you are, where is your business, where does it stand, where do you need to go, uh, step by step to be successful? Um, do a forecast, a three to five-year forecast, in case this were to happen, we need some rainy day funds. And then also one of the other efforts we wanna push is, uh, promoting online business. So if some of our businesses are not already online and they're retail, that is one thing we wanna help them specifically. And then of course, um, um, speak specifically with our hoteliers and then coaching them on what are the best practices? How do we do travel now? And, uh, the business promotion activities to promote to eat local and of course, um, uh, visit our local restaurants, uh, that is one thing that we'll be pushing as well. So this is just a proposal, it's very draft and it would be an extension, um, to, to help, uh, the chamber members and the future, uh, prospective members and complement the, uh, efforts of the E D C.
Any questions from the council? Any last remarks?
We're just excited. Let's get our economy back and going, really, yes.
Thank you, thank you for weathering the storm, you know, during the, the March, April and May, you know, and, and, and tell your team that, thank you very much for sticking in there because they, they haven't let up and you haven't let up, you know, we just wanna thank you on behalf of the citizens of Mission.
Thank you, Mayor.
And our businesses, so a lot of them are members of Mission.
Yes, they are. We're excited, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pet, is there final notes or directions or are you gonna allow any of the, any of the, uh, directors or?
Um, uh, sir, so the directors are here for any specific questions. Um, we, we met, uh, this morning as a staff to go over, uh, the list that they had provided and then also for, for future clarification to make sure all these are eligible expenditures, um, that, that will be. So again, this is a, a working document that we will be, uh, continuing to adjust accordingly. Again, um, something that, uh, in, in, in these next couple of days or in the next week, uh, any, any, uh, type of direction, uh, that we would look at, we would definitely, um, if, if necessary, have another meeting to, uh, modify the, the, the list and also any new, uh, components that, uh, might be coming from, uh, the mayor and the council. Uh, for any, and something that, that comes up again, uh, we, we have, uh, received notifications on potential changes and/or also, uh, future funding. So that's something that would, uh, would, uh, we would make adjustments accordingly based on the funding available. So, uh, we will have other, other future, uh, meetings or workshops if necessary. This is a, the first, uh, draft of what we, uh, wanted to, uh, start, um, the, the discussion on these are the potential uses of the funds.
Uh, uh, be, being an ex educator, I wanna give you some homework, you know, so, you know, if you could, uh, reshuffle this list and put it in priority order if we were to do it. If we, we were given, uh, uh, you know, one million dollars, which, you know, from one to five, six to ten and, 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 you know.
That's right.
You know, and, and, based, based on that, I think, I think that would, uh, that would give us a better idea. And for the record, I'd be advise the, the council, as well, as well as the citizens of our city, that if, uh, if we were at, if the county would have used the same budget, I'm correcting, the same formula that was used by the federal government, which was a hundred and seventy-four dollars times per capa of the twenty eighteen census, we would, we should have received fourteen million eight hundred and one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. You know, just FYI for the record, so we can document it in our, in our minutes. You know, that, that, that was a formula that, that, that our Congress used to, to fund the section of, uh, for the City of Mission under the County of Cap. So.
When is our homework due to the town?
The homework, uh, will be due, uh, if we were, we have twenty-three more days.
Twenty-three more days.
Twenty-three more days. If, if we need to call another special meeting so we can be able to approve it, you know, to approve it as per se, uh, my correction to the city manager has been that he will repair a budget for fourteen million eight hundred and one thousand four hundred and sixty-three, uh, which is establishing the needs for the City of Mission. Just in case, if we get funded nine million, we'll, we'll do the, the priority up to nine million. And then the other ones, we'll look for alternative funding for, with other sources, other departments. Uh, you know, and, and we just continue, we'll just continue because it's important that we, we do the prevention, we do the preparedness and we do the re- response and be ready for the response and the recovery for now to the rest of our life, you know, because, uh, COVID nineteen is not, is not, uh, how can I say, it's, it's not gonna leave our lives. This is, this, uh, COVID nineteen will impact it the way nine eleven impacted us where, where a lot of, a lot of strategies were, uh, were done and, and, and that became a way of life for us. And, and lo and behold, hurricane season is around the corner. There's all, there's already a possible depression in Florida, a second one, you know, may turn into a second name storm. You know, so we need to make sure that, that, uh, we're ready, we're ready for any type of emergency because I hear also the possibility that there might be a COVID twenty. And, you know, if there's a COVID twenty, you know, uh, lo and behold, God bless us. You know, God bless Mission and God bless America, you know? That's the only thing I can say, you know, as far as that is concerned. But together, you can get through it. We're gonna get through it, you know, staying positive and using our, our safety measures. And the best tool, I always said, is self-protection. You take care of each one of you individually first. Just like when you fly, you know, when they, you're flying with a, a, a child, you know, the, the stewardess always says, put the mask first on, on you before you put the child, you know? But, so you gotta take care of yourself.
Mayor, if I could have a comment? I would like for us to maybe meet whenever you all have more information after they decide whether they're gonna do this form, but I would like for us to concentrate on the nine point three that's already given. And I would like to see.
They're not given yet.
Well, but that should, that's already something that they voted on. Didn't the community already vote?
But it's not in the back, it's not in our back.
I understand that, but right now we need to focus on what we already proposed that's gonna be going our way as, as a priority. I mean, you know, do that first and then all the other ones, so that way we can. And I'd like for y'all to work on that and come back to us in a couple of weeks or a week or whenever, you know, more. Um, so that way we won't be wasting so much time. And I understand that these are our wish lists and it's great, you all work very hard on all the things that, that you all put together. But if they come back and they don't really meet the qualifications of what COVID, I would like for us, or you should start discussing that and not wait. Uh, in other words, I don't want us to give any money back.
Yes, no, absolutely, and, and, uh, the overall goal is to, uh, utilize all the funds that are allocated to us.
Yes, and, and, and I think that's a philosophy with all the cities, the point two cities, and also the county that we don't, we don't wanna send any money back that's already in, in our county, you know? Because it's a great investment into our economy to be able to integrate a hundred and fifty-one million into our economy in the areas where people are hurting, because that's really what we're, that, that, that's really what the intent of the money is, the areas where. And, and, and hopefully we can, we can liven up and go back to where we were, you know, in February. And we had a, what was it, the, uh, the sales taxes, eighteen percent positive, you know? We were, we were booming, we were booming as, as a city, you know, but, uh, we'll, we'll get back. Together, united, you know, Mission has always been a very resilient, we've always been a very resilient city. And our citizens have always stepped up to the plate and today is not any different. Okay, like your motion to adjourn or? Unless you have any final notes?
No, sir, I'm, I will, we're definitely, uh.
Your motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, all those against, same sign. Uh, motion adjourned, we're adjourned and go out with safety, okay?
Thank you.
Take care of yourself.